Give me some, oh, there it is. Good evening, I want to thank you all for coming. We do have a quorum. I'm joined by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris Dawson. We have some very special guests with us today. And in a few minutes, I will present them to you. But I'd like to, Mr. Weezer, if you're comfortable, take up item two. And I have some cards on that item. Do you want to take the public comment?
We could take the public comments first, please. Thank you.
Okay, so if I can get Judy Price, Lisa Sarkin, Jay Handel, Patty, I can't make out the last name. Just come on. Where is the?
Center.
Where is the?
Center.
Oh, right there.
It's hard to see.
Okay, Jay, just go right ahead. Somebody get a flashlight and flash it on Jay.
No, leave me alone. I don't like being in the spotlight.
And excuse me, for the record, item number two is a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment report relative to an online voting pilot for neighborhood council elections.
See, Erica, you used to me. You just jump in, you, all right. You cover the bosses' backside. I appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr. Handel.
Okay, so for the record, are we doing one and two together in public comment?
We're gonna do one right now.
One, okay. Number one.
Item two, item two.
I'm sorry, item two, my bad.
Okay, so for the record, item two, we have a CIS in on this one. So I'd like to get more than the one minute, if that's possible, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. So my name is Jay Handel. I'm representing the West L.A. Sotell Neighborhood Council. And it's regarding the Dunn Report on Elections. Needless to say, having been the director of elections during the last period, I have intimate knowledge of what worked and did not work. And I'd like to say to the three council members that online voting, in the long run, will work, in the long run. But quite frankly, that beta test was not fully ready nor funded by the council to be able to work. So we have medical marijuana people here.
So it was our fault, Jay, huh?
Well, no.
Wasn't your fault, it was our fault.
No, it was all of our fault.
Could you, for the record, would you put down that it was our fault and not the person's fault who ran it, okay?
So, so, so for the record, there's medical marijuana people here who would understand that they have a system called Indica, where you have an iPad and you put the back of your driver's license with the scanning bar, and you hit a button, and it populates a registration of a patient going into medical marijuana. Our system was built so that we had to handwrite things, bring people in, try and type it in, handwrite a code, and had human error from top to bottom. It wasn't funded well, it wasn't managed well, it wasn't put together well. And for the record, I was hired way after that system was put into place. So my recommendation is that you don't do online moving forward. You continue to suspend it unless and until the council is ready to fund it completely and, at the same time, make sure it's managed completely when the system is put together. As far as the recommendations made in the letter by the department, the department is asking neighborhood councils to violate the charter, and that is to have the department turn around and tell us how to mold ourselves to do online voting, as opposed to having online voting being molded to neighborhood councils' bylaws. And the charter under 904 says the department doesn't have the right to tell us how to do our geographical and our seats. And that's what they're asking us to do. So rather than self-affirmation, we should be looking at the issue of self-determination, which is what the charter gives us. So I'm asking you to forward to council to continue to suspend the online voting, to not approve what the department is asking for right now, and to read both of my reports that came out, full reports on online voting, so you can see the true facts of what happened in online voting and why we had the problems we had, with the last comment being, the vendor that we hired did not deliver the voter registration portal until the day of the last election. So the leak of information that went out to Studio City residents was a result of the department having to build a portal within their own system that was not a secure portal, nor was it secure enough to even have only admins send things out. So that's how that information got out to the general public. And again, it was a failure of the online company from actually delivering the portal that it was paid for in the contract. And I would ask Mr. Chairman and your council members to actually get a report back as to when that portal was actually built, why the delay happened, and that will tell you a lot of the reasons why we had the problem in the leak of the information. Thank you all very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. So if I can get Ms. Price, Ms. Sarkin, please come forward.
Hi, Judy Price, I'm with Valley Glen. If this motion, you know, goes forward and online is restored, then the winner is La La Land. No, wrong envelope. It's actually Dunn is the winner. The losers are the neighborhood councils. I have been to Lank meeting, Fank meeting, two Bonk meetings, and the majority of neighborhood councils have issues with online voting. It should not go forward. I agree with Jay. Thank you.
Thank you. So Lisa, and like I said, I have Patty, Lydia Grant, Ms. Grant, if you're here, Robert Newman. Just go right ahead.
Well, first, I'd like to ask you a question. Is this the only hearing that's going to be had for this report?
Well, why don't we just go through the hearing and we'll figure out what, I don't want to say in advance what we're gonna do until I hear what happens. So you can make your statement.
Okay, well, the part of the report that was about the Studio City Neighborhood Council is not true. And we've given you documents that you should have in front of you for papers that were filed, and I wish everybody would pay attention instead of just talking when we drive an hour and a half to get here and no one's paying any attention. I want to say exactly what Judy said, except for the fact that no one knew what they were doing with the election. It can't possibly be ready for the online to be utilized. There's no way. And I support whatever it is that the Skid Row Neighborhood Council-to-be wants to do. Because they shouldn't be pushed into something so that it ends up with what happened at our election, which was an abomination.
Thank you. So if I can get our next speaker, please.
Yes, I'm Patty Berman. I'm the president of the Downtown Neighborhood Council. Gentlemen, lady. I was told that this was going to be more about the interim elections that are coming up next month and not so much about the long-term going-forward plans for electronic voting. Our neighborhood council used electronic voting. It had a lot of issues, but we do believe, and we have sent in a CIS saying that we feel that in the future, done properly, the electronic voting is going to work, the online voting will work. But you have to be willing to put in the resources to purchase a package at the level necessary for whatever complication there is in this particular voting model. So I agree totally with what Jay said about the report coming in from Dunn. You can't ask us to become what you need to work with a software package so that it'll be easier for the, for the agency and for the software package to do their job. You have to let us be ourselves. The whole purpose of neighborhood councils is that we're supposed to be all different.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Next speaker, is that Ms. Grant? Yeah, you can see.
Hi, I'm Lydia Grant. I'm former Board of Neighborhood Commissioners Commissioner. And one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is I was the only commissioner who voted against the online voting system to begin with. And the reason why is because I could see the issues that were going to arise. I was at one of the neighborhood council meeting, neighborhood council elections, and I attend almost every single one of them. And it was a disaster to watch 90 people stand in line hoping that the department could figure out how to do it. There are too many pieces missing in the system that we are not paid for, like a card reader and things like that. It was a pilot program. The cost was between $500 and $800,000 for what we got. And the thing is, we didn't get enough. So for you to put the system into place where it's gonna be across the whole area, the costs are gonna be outrageous. And I'm not against the system if it's gonna be done right. Lank has also submitted a letter against it from representing many of the neighborhood councils across the city. We are basically united in not wanting this. The neighborhood councils are supposed to be individual and autonomous, and they are not if they get rules that cover, that they have to be all the same. And you, as council members, would not want the entire city to be able to vote for you.
Thank you.
You're supposed to be representing your community.
Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker, please.
I'm Rita Villa with the Studio City Neighborhood Council. We have a CIS in on this issue. I guess I may get a little bit extra time for that.
Yes, you will. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, except I have to be totally honest that my neighborhood council submitted a CIS on this, but our CIS pretty much said, we've received the information, we're looking at it, and we want to come up with recommendations. They could not agree with the report at all that was issued. We had a lot of exceptions to it. I, on the other hand, submitted personally, and so now I've switched from my neighborhood council position to my personal speaking. I reviewed the report, and I felt that it was sadly lacking in a number of cases. And the first was that there were certain objectives for the online voting. One was to create a secure voter registration database. Jay's already addressed the fact that that certainly didn't happen. It was supposed to offer secure online telephone voting on the Everyone Counts platform, so voters could easily vote either in person or at the polling location from any computer. And that didn't happen. There were a lot of people in our neighborhood council, about 100 of them, who registered, tried, attempted to register for online and were unsuccessful. It was supposed to increase voter turnout, and that certainly didn't happen. For the SCNC, there were 367 voters in '14 versus 390 in 2016. That increased 23 voters, with 100 sat on the sideline because they couldn't vote and didn't come to the polls. And, and so I think it was an abject failure. I agree with what has been said by everyone before me, which is, we do not support, I do not support, going forward with online at this time. I really think that all the money that's been spent could have been much better spent in other locations. And I'm also concerned that the state has a provision that actually says that we cannot have online voting. It is section 19217 of the California Election Code, which says, quote, "A, no voting system or part of a voting system shall be connected to the Internet at any time." It had, there are three other portions of that, but I won't bore you with them. I'm just saying that clearly, our line, our online experience was not good, and it seems to be at variance with what's allowed by the state of California. I recommend that we put a total hold on this and not proceed until a lot more investigation is done into the cost-benefit relationship of this. It cost a lot of money to do what's been done, money that was not well-spent, that did not accomplish the objectives intended. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. So if the next speaker would identify, I have Robert Newman, General Jeff, Rosalie Preston, Ann, is Ann, is that you, Ann? Hey. So just don't be shy.
Good evening. Robert Newman, Vice President of Administration for the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I want to tell you, I got elected to my third term with a broad base of stakeholders by online voting, vote by mail. And so I support online voting if it works properly, and like I said, it's funded properly, and it's going to be something that we can use as a tool, not only just at the poll, prior to the polling place, but also various pop-ups as well. Also, vote by mail. And that leads me into, so with regard to what's happening now with the election, the subdivision election that's coming up in April, very, very, very concerned about what's transpiring here with a single polling place, a single, a single polling place in the Skid Row area, the fact that there is no other means for people to vote, and very concerned about the outreach, and numerous, numerous things. So it's very important with this upcoming election that all the tools are in place so that the, we can get a broad amount of stakeholders to participate in this election and voice the, who, what they decide as far as whether the subdivision should go forward or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is Lisa here? And General Jeff? I don't see him. So, yes, identify yourself.
Rosalie Preston, on the board of the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. And we filed a community impact statement on this issue. We, we were one of the 30-some neighborhood councils who chose to try out the online voting. And as was stated in the letter that we submitted, we had a number of issues with the online voting, similar to what has already been stated, including the registration, online registration system. And the, actually, at the polling place, the, somehow, the city clerk's database eliminated voters from voting in their correct districts. One of our big issues is that if you're gonna have online voting, there has to be paper verification, just as has been mentioned throughout the country with online voting systems. Unless you can double-check the results, there's, there's a big risk of people being able to hack into the system. I mean, I don't think our neighborhood council would experience that, but some councils, where there's a controversial issue and an element from the community wanted to take over the board, you know, they, they could be motivated to, to hack into the voting system. So a paper verification is very important to any future system. And again, we felt that the system as it was designed in this past election was not ready and had a lot of problems.
Thank you. General?
I'm starting to fall off. Microphone malfunction. Hold on a little while. Good evening. My name is General Jeff. I am the Chair of the Skid Row Neighborhood Council Formation Committee. To put it bluntly, we are opposed to online voting, specifically for our subdivision election that will be happening in less than 30 days, on April 6th. By the time it comes out of this committee, it will go before the full council. Council is about to go into recess, so that means at the earliest, the council will have less than two weeks to implement something that we, it's impossible for Dunn, as well as our community, to do proper outreach in regards to online voting. There are a lot of, as previous speakers have said, there are a lot of issues and concerns, a big concern that this committee and city council have to come up with based on Dunn's recommendations. Over $340,000 to implement a flawed system, that is, it's already well-documented that it's flawed. And this is the most important vote in the history of the Skid Row community, and we cannot be subjected to such a flawed system that will determine our, our, our future. So with that, we, we oppose, and we hope that Dunn will be able to get things in line for the 2018 online.
Thank you. Ann?
I'm Ann Jobe from the Silmar Neighborhood Council, and we have not taken a position on this. This has not come before our board, so I speak for myself. And I made the trek when I saw a note from Jerry Gomes that this was going to be discussed, just to say, I do believe that online voting is, we need to do this, online voting. It just needs to be done well. And we were the first neighborhood council to have online voting a year ago. And it was not without its flaws, but things that get started are often flawed. And I would hate to see us throw it out just because we had a rocky start. So there's work to be done, and we should do it, and make, because the whole point is, we want as many people to vote as can vote. We want voting to be easy. We don't want it to be hard. We want people to have as many options as, as possible, so that it's, and given what happened yesterday and the horrible turnout, whatever we can do to get more people involved in voting will be to the good. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ann. So is Lisa Sarkin?
I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen.
No? Yes. You are?
Catherine McNenney.
I don't have a card, but I'll give you your one minute.
I just turned one in.
And then we will. No, will you go on there? Go on, time is yours.
Thank you very much. Why paper ballots are the right choice for the Skid Row Neighborhood Council election. As listed in our Skid Row Population Document, which was included in our official subdivision application submitted to Dunn, the vast majority of Skid Row residents, approximately 12,000, are very low-income. This means that they do not have easy access to a computer. Even the majority that are housed in the community utilize free Obama phones. I mention these Obama phones because it is important to understand that these are not smartphones, but flip phones. Uploading pictures of documents on an Obama phone is all but impossible. Most, most of the low-income residents in Skid Row must travel outside the neighborhood to gain access to a computer. Many use the library. Within Skid Row, there are very limited access points to a computer. Of the few that are available to the public, there are several barriers to use, such as limited times, requirements for being enrolled in a specific program, even gender. For these reasons and more, online voting is not the appropriate way for the Skid Row community to vote in this critical upcoming subdivision election. I would respectfully remind everyone that this is our application, and our community has unique challenges. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Weezer, you want to say something on this before we proceed?
Sure. Thank you. Do we have Dunn, here, Dunn representatives? We don't have Dunn representatives. I have a number of questions to ask about this, whether, what happened in downtown L.A. in the online voting system, were there any issues? I understand that we put this, we suspended online voting for neighborhood councils because of some issues that arose in Studio City, but the indications I had received was that in downtown L.A., the last time around, it worked well. But I wanted to ask if, in fact, that is the case, whether or not we should proceed with online voting in downtown L.A., but I don't have people from Dunn here to answer those questions. So Chair, Council President, I've asked that we probably continue this item, if we could, until we get back some, some staff members from Dunn.
So we'll close the public hearing, and this item will be continued, and we'll let you know as soon as we know when we will re-agendize this item. So, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, let's move to our, our item, and I just want to take a moment to welcome, we have two individuals that are with us today from the great state of Colorado. And I think the last time that we met and had a, a conversation, I indicated to you we were gonna try to bring in some folk to just give us their insight. So we have Barbara Bra with us, who is the Executive Director from the, of the Colorado Department of Revenue. And Barbara, I was looking over some of your responsibilities, and I see, other than the tax division that you oversee and the motor vehicles, when I was in the State Assembly, I was the Chair of a committee that handled everything else. Gaming, liquor, tobacco, and I was the king of sin then, but I see you do have, and the lottery, I had the lottery. And, but still, she's very skilled in this area and has traveled around the country, speaking to individuals that want to understand what happened in Colorado, and I think has also done some international things. We also have with us tonight, we have Ron Camerzel, who is the Senior Director of Enforcement for the department. And Ron is very experienced, as is Barbara, and has been part of, I guess both of you were part of the group that was put together by the governor to kind of vet this and make recommendations to the governor and the State Assembly and what have you. So what I'd like to do today is just to start off by, you know, maybe having you speak for a bit, tell us your thoughts, some of the things that you had to go through, and then we'll probably have some questions for you. Off and on, I'll take other public comment from the community, but we really have a lot of questions. And I just want to say on behalf of this committee that we are so appreciative that you would take the time out to fly down here with us. We know you're two very important people, and we know that there's a lot that you could be doing in Colorado. But anyway, we want to welcome you to Los Angeles. And when we found out you were coming, Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson to my left ordered up some good weather. Because the week before that, Mr. Weezer had ordered up a lot of rain because we needed rain. So anyway, welcome to sunny Los Angeles. So Barbara, if it's okay, I will start with you. And thank you again.
Thank you. And thank you.
In fact, let's give them a round of applause. They really did not have to, they really did not have to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the public that have come to this committee meeting. We do enjoy, and we do take a great deal of responsibility in talking to individuals like you and groups like this for a couple of reasons. One, because there's always a misconception that there, you know, if you fly over the state of Colorado, there's just this square of smoke up, and that is not true. We really haven't seen much of a difference in the consumption amounts, either in youth or in adults. And so that's one of the reasons. The other one is because when we started down this path, especially for recreational marijuana, we were the first in the world. We knew that, we didn't really have a model to follow, and we would have loved to have had people like us to talk to. And so what we did is we came up with some guideling, guide, getting, guide poise, God, guiding principles, excuse me, some things that we wanted to look at and make sure that we had included in everything that we did. And then we wanted to leave a trail, so to speak. And so what we have done is we've become very transparent, and so for any group, or any state, or any local jurisdiction, or even any country that is looking to do this, we are very willing to come and talk, and talk about the things that we've done, the challenges that we faced, and what we've done to address them. And so it's good to start off with how we got to where we are. And we started off in Colorado in the year 2000 with Amendment 20. So it was just, I think, about four years after California initiated your ability to have recre, medical marijuana and, for patients. And we did that for our medical patients as well, and it was done through a ballot initiative. And so what Amendment 20 did is it allowed for, essentially, not really, it's kind of decriminalization, but not really making it lawful, but basically saying there was an affirmative defense if you had marijuana on your person, but if you also had a medical marijuana card. And what happened during that, that first decade of the century is that there were a lot of groups that kind of started to really more commercialize this. And so it was intended to be kind of a, if you think of hospice workers, caregivers, providing care, providing marijuana for medical use. And what we started to see throughout that time were a lot of storefronts and a lot of warehouses opening up with the big green crosses. And ultimately, in the year 2010, our legislature acted and said, okay, we've got to get our arms around this. And so what they did is they enacted some statutes in which they created the Marijuana Enforcement Division and set up a system of licensed businesses. And so what they did is they set up cultivations, so licensed cultivations, licensed, licensed products manufacturers, and licensed centers, so stores. And so that, and Mr. Camerzel will talk a lot about what we do in order to license those businesses. But that kind of went along pretty well, and, or not so well, quite honestly, because one of the challenges that we faced there was a broken funding model. And we really didn't have the funding that we needed to really regulate this industry in the way that was intended by the statute. And so that was one of the things that we faced during this time. And so we were, at one point, having 15 people doing the work of 55, and it wasn't working well. And the reason I bring that up is because it's really important that regardless of the kind of regulatory system that you create, if you cannot fund it and fund it well, it won't work. And I'll just be really blunt about that. So what happened is then, is that we were working towards trying to make this work and getting our funding model fixed, and Amendment 64 started to go through the ballot process, and that was the year 2012. And in 2012, in November, the voters in the state of Colorado said, yes, we want marijuana for non-medical use. And so we had then to address that new type of regulatory system. As I mentioned, it wasn't done anywhere. Medical had been done for some, in a lot of places, but not recreational. And so we had to really think about this. We had to look at it from the perspective of, of how this was going to be perceived, not only by the state, but by the federal government, since this was still illegal at the federal government, the federal level, and then even other, other countries. We got a lot of questions about how does this impact the treaties, and luckily, that's not our bailiwick, so we didn't have to answer those. But Amendment 64 allowed for several things. It allowed for personal growth. And so every adult in the state can grow up to six plants in their homes, or their garages, or, and only three of them can be flowering, three cannot. It allows It allows for individuals 21 years of age or older to purchase, transport, to have on their person, but only one ounce or less. And that was really key because anything over one ounce had to be, it was still a crime. It regulated the growth and manufacture and sale of retail marijuana, recreational marijuana. So the same three systems, cultivations, products, manufacturers and stores. But it also introduced testing labs. So now we had a whole new kind of, kind of group that we had to address. The amendment was extremely aggressive. It had the timelines for implementation in it. So we had from November of 2012 to January 1 of 2014 to get this done. We had to have rules up by July 1 of 2013 and we had to begin accepting applications by October 1. That was really, really an aggressive timeline. And as your Chair mentioned, the governor issued an executive order establishing a task force. And I was one of the two co-chairs and Ron was definitely on that co-chair, on that task force, but also was one of the chairs of one of the committees that was as a result of that. And we were tasked with bringing a diverse group of people together, extremely diverse. And when I say that, I mean that. We had legislators on there, we had people from public health, we had law enforcement, we had members of the industry, we had patients, we had employers councils, employees councils, we had every diverse opinion at the table. And we were charged with identifying the issues and then coming up with recommendations for the General Assembly, the governor and the Attorney General. And it was because of those diverse viewpoints that we were able to come up with some pretty reasonable and really good recommendations. Because as people had to negotiate with each other, they kind of came to a really good solution. So we did that and then we went ahead and implemented. And we began to, to, you know, roll this out through the year of 2013, which was frankly a blur. It was, we were working 24/7. It was a ton of work. And one of the things I will always say is that no matter what you do, for this kind of an endeavor and this kind of a regulated model, it will always take you longer than you think. It's going to cost more than you think and it's going to be harder than you think. And so as we walked through this and we started to, to address this, one of the things that we had to figure out, since there was no model to follow, was to create our own. So what we did is we had three guideposts that kind of guided our way. And the first one was to figure out ways to keep this out of the hands of children, to keep criminals out of this model. So making sure that there wasn't money laundering or cartel type of interaction there. And then to prevent diversion into other states, so keeping out of the hands of kids, criminals and other states. And everything that we did from the perspective of the statutes that were enacted, the rules that we developed and all the processes that we did, we always kept those three things in mind. So as you kind of take a look at this, in Colorado, we have two industry segments. And one is the medical and one is the recreational. But they all are, what we've tried to do over the years is to harmonize the regulations and the statutes between the two because many of the industry will do both. And it's a lot easier for us to regulate both in the same manner. So we have some regulatory objectives. One of the things that the amendment did is it required us to balance public safety with burden on the industry. I'm the state licensing authority, so I'm the one that's responsible for ensuring that the right people get licensed and the, and the wrong people don't. I'm responsible for looking at all of the sanctions and investigations that occur and ordering either summary suspensions or orders to show cause or actually ordering that a license be allowed. So those are the kinds of things that we do. So one of the, so as we've gone through this, one of the things that has really worked for us has been the use of stakeholder working groups. And we have used those in everything that we've done. It worked really well during the task force phase and we've used it with everything else. So as you can probably imagine, every year, there's probably 10 to 12 to 15 bills that come out of our state legislature. And we have to implement those and those are going to take rules. And so we bring that group together or some faction of that and we start to hash that out. And the reason that it works well is because everybody feels like they've been heard. And two, the industry comes in and they begin to realize that it's good for them to comply. And they, we establish buy-in and what we call, it's what we call negotiated rulemaking. And they go out and we have a lot more voluntary compliance. And that's better for the state and it's better for the industry and it's frankly easier for us to regulate. So, and we've also done it when we've had problems. So I'm sure you all have read that we had some issues early on with edibles. And that was one of the other challenges that we had. And that was, we didn't realize that people were going to, that edibles were going to be as popular as they were. And we started to realize why. Because on the medical side, people live there in Colorado and so they have a home in which to consume. And so they are more likely to consume smokable marijuana. Well, when people come in from out of state, there isn't a place to consume. The easiest thing that they can then use is an edible product. Edibles affect individuals differently than smokable marijuana. So if you think about how smokable marijuana is, flower, you tend to get that feeling right away. You feel the effect right away. But with an edible, it can take up to, you know, two to four hours to feel the effects. So what we were seeing were, were two things. One, we had edibles that, you know, was a cookie about this size and it had about six servings here. Now, I don't know about you, but this isn't six servings of a cookie to me. If I have a cookie, this is maybe half a serving. So, you know, people, it wasn't intuitive. And so what would happen is people would take a little bit and they would eat it and then they didn't feel anything and they eat a little bit more and before you know it, they ate the whole thing. So we'd had to do a couple of things. And we brought this group back together and we identified a number of things. And so one of the things that we did is we established that there had to be standard serving sizes. So each serving had to be 10 milligrams of THC or less. The whole edible couldn't be more than 100 milligrams of THC. And it had to be demarked. So in other words, you could easily break it apart and know what was a serving. So it was, it made it more intuitive. Later that same year, we ended up creating a universal symbol. And we require that universal symbol then to also be on every one of the servings. And so that, we think that those are the kinds of things that this kind of a working group process allows for very quick response to either statutes or with, you know, problems or challenges that arise. I'm going to talk really quickly about the taxation because that's usually what everybody wants to talk about. And what I do want to do is kind of caution you all because while there is a lot of tax money that comes in, it's not enough to fix your general fund. And it's not going to be. And so, and I'll give you some examples, some things, some money that we have brought in. So up to date, from January 1, 2014 to date, we have brought in about almost $370 million in tax money. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. And to you, think about the fact that Colorado has a $26 billion annual budget. So it's kind of a drop in the bucket and besides, that's over like three and a half years. So the first year, we brought in about 19 million, second year, 88 million. And then last year, last fiscal year, we brought in 141. And so far to date, we have collected about 120 million. It's going to be a little bit more because we're getting ready to report out, but we hadn't made those numbers public yet. And the way that it works is we have an excise tax that is 15%. That's on the first transfer of unprocessed marijuana from the cultivation to any other place. And then that money goes actually to school construction and then to the public school fund. We have an additional 10% special sales tax. And that money goes to fund, remember that broken funding model I was talking about? It goes to fund Ron's units. And so we get the first bite of the apple, it's a same-year appropriation. And also things like drug recognition experts, the dogs, a number of things like that to make things safer. And then the year after, we will use that money then for youth prevention because it's a really important endeavor for us, as well as substance abuse and prevention and treatment. And then we have the just general sales tax that occurs on that. And that's on the recreational side. The medical side only has just general sales tax. And for that 10% general, special sales tax, the state retains 85%, but 15% of it goes back to the local communities to assist with anything that they need. And it's done on a pro rata basis of the sales that they have. And the reason that's really important is because as I mentioned, there's going to be a lot of costs associated with this. At least for us, there was. We have two groups in my department that manage this. One is the Marijuana Enforcement Division. And our annual budget there is about $12.2 million a year. And we have about 108 people that are appropriated in there. And so they do a ton of work and I'd say the majority of them are either criminal investigators or compliance investigators. And Ron will talk a lot more about that. And then in tax, we have 19 individuals that work solely on this. And the reason for that is because since this industry is largely unbanked, they're not, we don't, they don't have the same documentation that we're normally used to seeing. And so what we do is we actually tax audit 100% of this industry every three years. And so that takes some work to do all of that. What I'd like to do then is just kind of turn it over to Ron. He'll tell you a lot more and then maybe
One quick question, population of Colorado?
Five and a half million.
Okay. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members. Again, I want to just thank you for the opportunity to be able to share this information with you. As Executive Director Braulit indicated, it was a very lonely walk for us to be the first to implement. And so we see it as an obligation to share our experiences and
Thank you.
And hopefully lead to better public policy as it relates to marijuana regulation. I just want to really briefly give you kind of a 30,000-foot view of the Marijuana Enforcement Division, our structure, some of the activities that we're involved in. First, there's really two principal activities of the division. And that is the licensing function and then the enforcement function or the compliance function. We view the licensing function as a gatekeeping function to ensure, as Executive Director Braulit indicated, to keep criminal and corruptive elements out of the industry, to make sure that the folks that are running these businesses are suitable to do so, that they have the financial capacity to run these businesses and that they're going to be good, good public citizens. So how we do that, we, as Barb said, we started with not having a model. So we looked at some of the other divisions, which I'm responsible for and Barb is as well. And that includes the gaming division where we regulate legalized gambling in the state of Colorado. And it's been well-established for almost 25 years. And we have a very, very developed process for background investigations on licensed businesses and also the individuals that work within that industry. We took many of the best practices from that division and applied those to the Marijuana Enforcement Division and to the marijuana industry in the state of Colorado. So we license the businesses themselves. We look at every equity owner of the business. We look at their criminal history. We look at where they got the money to invest into the business to make, make sure the source of funds is from a lawful source. We license all of the employees that work within the industry. And there's two real types of employee license, we call them occupational licenses. The first is a key license and that's for someone that's in a management position within a licensed business. So they have, they can make management decisions. So the, the bar is set a little bit higher for them. And then we have the worker bees that, that work within the industry, the bud tenders, the folks that work in the cultivation facilities, work in the processing facilities. And that's called a support license. And that is, is primarily a criminal background investigation. Every one of those employees gets a badge. They're required to wear it while they're in the facility so that not only local licensing jurisdictions, but also law enforcement, if they have a reason to be in the facility to either investigate a non-compliance issue, they can readily identify those people as being licensed by the state authority. The other, the other piece of this is the field enforcement piece, which is obviously a very important piece of the, of the regulatory model, which includes complaint investigations. The industry in Colorado, and I think it probably is the same here and in our experience in other regulated industries, they're the best watchdog there is out there and they police each other pretty well. So if someone down the street isn't following the rules and they have an unfair advantage, they're going to call us and let us know. So we do receive complaints and we investigate those complaints. We also do compliance inspections of the, of the licensed facilities, cultivations, retail stores, our manufacturing facilities and then also our testing facilities. And we use, we have a inventory tracking system that tracks all of our plants and marijuana products from seed to sale. So from the point that they're introduced into a growing medium in the cultivation facility to the point they're, they're sold to the consumer. That system gives us a tremendous amount of data. And we've developed risk matrices to help us more efficiently use our limited resources to identify behaviors within the system that are not normal. And so you see something that's outside of the norm and we're able to identify those things and, and send someone out to do an investigation or to do a compliance check on, on those facilities. The other really important thing that we do is underage compliance. As Executive Director Braul said, one of our, our primary objectives is to keep this out of the hands of kids. And so we took a page out of the liquor model. And we do underage compliance things in a virtually the same exact manner as we do for liquor. So we'll send underage operatives into a retail store and see if they can buy marijuana. And if they can, that's, that's a problem for the licensee. It's a problem for the employee that sold to the underage person. And then in the medical centers, we'll actually send folks in that don't have a patient card and see if they can buy marijuana. So it's a, it's a really effective tool. And ironically, the, the compliance rates that we're seeing in the marijuana industry are very similar to what we experienced in the liquor industry in Colorado. So about anywhere from 90 to 92% compliance rate based on the inspections that we do. The other thing I wanted to just talk about is we have, just a little background information. We have about 3,000 licensed businesses within the state of Colorado. That includes the stores, the cultivations, the centers, the, the testing facilities and the, and the manufacturers. We have about 1,600 on the medical side and about 1,400 on the retail side. We have about 32,000 occupational licenses in the state. So the employees that work within the industry, there's about 32,000 of them that are licensed in the state of Colorado. Talk a little bit about testing because that's another, it's a very, very important piece of the regulatory model. For obviously for consumer safety and, and public safety. It's also a very challenging part of the industry. We, we launched our testing program in May of 2014. So we, we legalized, we started issuing licenses and we were playing catch-up with the testing piece of it. And, and as Barb had indicated, we had very aggressive implementation timelines. We test for potency of the marijuana products, both on the medical and the retail side, homogeneity of the THC within the edible product. So when you, when you buy that cookie, we test to make sure that the THC is evenly distributed throughout the, the product itself. So you're not biting one corner and getting all of the THC in that one bite. So it's very important from a consumer safety standpoint. We, we test residual solvents on concentrates that are manufactured. Most of the concentrates are, use, use some type of solvent in order to extract the THC into a concentrator or an oil. And so we test that, that finished product to make sure that the residual solvents have been cleaned or cleansed from, from the actual finished product that the consumer's going to use. We also test for microbial, so we test for mold, mildew and yeast on, on the plants and the finished flour that is, that is ultimately either used in a production process or it's consumed as smokable marijuana. And what's interesting is we launched the, the full testing program for recreational or retail marijuana in the state of Colorado. And yet there was no requirement for testing on the medical side. So we're now implementing the testing on the medical So we're now implementing the testing on the medical side, which seems a little bit backwards, but that's just the way it unfolded with our General Assembly and the implementation of marijuana regulation. The other thing that we do is we work cooperatively with the Department, our Department of Agriculture, who does a lot of the pesticide testing in the state of Colorado. Our licensed testing facilities are not currently certified to test for pesticides, and we're finding that testing for pesticides is a tricky business, and it's very challenging. So we're continuing to work through that with our licensed testing facilities, but at this time, we rely very heavily on our Department of Agriculture to do that testing for us. A little bit about our inventory tracking system, which is really the foundation of our regulatory model. I don't think we could effectively regulate the industry in Colorado without having that inventory tracking. Number one, we were able to really apply a chain of custody to all that product that's being grown from the point it's introduced into a growing medium till the point it's sold. The other thing is it gives us a huge amount of data to be able to enforce a lot of the rules and regulations and the laws. It's an incredibly important tool for us, and it's a deterrent to diversion outside of the regulated model for us. So I would, I would find it almost impossible for us to really effectively regulate the industry without that inventory tracking system. We do utilize RFID technology, which enables us to be more efficient and also enables the businesses to be more efficient. So as you can imagine, we have cultivation facilities that have tens of thousands of plants in them, and we can send a compliance investigator or a criminal investigator into that facility and download all the data before we ever leave our office, and then go into that facility and scan the facility in a matter of minutes. And some of the larger ones, it takes a little bit longer. But we can get an accurate reading on the number of plants that are in that facility. And the system will actually tell us. They reported this, you know, let's say they reported 10,000 plants in the facility in the system. We're only seeing 9,500 when we actually went out and did the physical inspection. It'll tell us which ones are not showing up actually on the ground in the facility. So it enables us to be much more efficient with our investigative resources. But it also, again, is a business efficiency for those, we don't require our licensees to use RFID readers in their facility, but those that do are recognizing the efficiencies that that presents for them in terms of operating. So when they move a plant from a veg room where it's a smaller plant into a flowering room, and they have the RFID readers on the door, it automatically moves it in the system for them. So it goes from room A to room B. And so there's some automation to the process for them. The other nice thing is it gives us a window into the activities of the business in Colorado. We have a dashboard on our system, and we can, and I can pull it up from my phone, we can pull it up from an iPad, and I can look at any given time and know how many plants are being cultivated within the regulated model. I can look at how many of them are in vegetative state. I can look at how many are in flowering state. It gives us a tremendous amount of information that is useful in the regulatory process. Very quickly, I want to talk a little bit about some of the trends that we're seeing with marijuana in the regulated model. For about the first two or three, two and a half years, in the regulated model, on the medical side, flower significantly out, flower sales or bud sales significantly outpaced retail by a margin of about two to one. Today, the retail market has caught up. So the retail market is almost even in terms of total sales of flower with the medical market in the state of Colorado. On the edibles side, the retail market outpaces the medical market in terms of edible sales by about three to one margin. And that has remained pretty consistent since the legalization of retail marijuana in the state of Colorado. So it's just, it's an interesting, and one of our things that we speculate about is in Colorado, you cannot consume openly or publicly. And when visitors come to the state of Colorado, the, you know, the thing that we hear is they have no place to smoke marijuana lawfully. And so many of them buy edible products because it's less conspicuous. You can be walking down the street or in your hotel room, and you can, you can eat a cookie or edible product, but you can't smoke. So we think that some of the public policy is kind of driving that a little bit, but certainly on the retail side, edibles are much more popular than they are on the medical side. Just a little bit about initial challenges as you embark on retail legalization, some of the things that we faced, incredible, incredibly aggressive implementation deadlines. And some of that's not, not within your control, but I would suggest any of those things that you can control, give yourself plenty of time. A lack of established infrastructure. You know, we, we started, as Executive Director Brolin indicated, we had a broken funding model. We had appropriation for 55 employees. We had 15. And we had to ratchet that up very quickly to implement retail marijuana. So be sensitive to what the infrastructure needs are going to be for your regulatory Inadequate and variable resources. So one of the reasons that we had the funding issues is because after the first year of medical legalis, well, medical regulated market in, after 2010, was that the General Assembly did a moratorium on new licenses. And at that time, our funding model was license fees. So all of a sudden, there was no more new license applications coming in, and so our revenue stream just tanked. So bear that in mind. And local jurisdictions, Denver currently, city of Denver currently has a moratorium on new license applications. So those types of things, understand what your revenue streams are and your revenue sources are and how that can be impacted by either decisions within your, your local jurisdiction or even at the state level. It's important to know. We still, when we, when we implemented medical marijuana, we had, as Barbara had mentioned, operating businesses that weren't licensed, and they were grandfathered in while they were applying for the license process. That was a challenge for us to have, because we didn't have the resources, it took a long time for us to get these folks licensed. So you could conceivably have someone continuing to operate for a year or two as an unlicensed facility, even though they've applied. And how do you address taking administrative action against them or disciplinary action when they, when they violate the laws and regulations, whether it be at the state level or the local level? So some challenges with that. And then, of course, no existing regulatory framework, which this is our, this is our rules, regulations, and laws for the state of Colorado. And it gets a little thicker every year, I'm sad to say. But this is a great, we would have loved to have had this when we started out. So, and you can get this off of LexisNexis, and we can give you the ISDN number for that. So I encourage a little light reading on that.
Thank you. I'll read it on the way going home.
And then finally, just some ongoing challenges that we all face and that you will undoubtedly face yourselves. Again, implementation timelines. We continue, you know, we're currently active in our legislative process. Our General Assembly's in session. And a year hasn't gone by since 2010 and the implementation of retail marijuana where we didn't have in excess of 20 or 30 bills going through the session on marijuana-related matters. Very difficult for the industry because the sands are shifting all the time, the rules are changing, the requirements are changing. And equally challenging for the regulatory agency to implement. Every summer, we go through three months of rulemaking, and we do stakeholder processes. They're very valuable to us, but it's an incredibly time-consuming process every year, and it just keeps repeating itself. And we're waiting for the day where it starts to stabilize and settle down, but we're not there yet. Rapid organizational growth, it's driven in large part due to changes in laws and rules and regulations. Production management, that's always a key issue for us. And trying to make sure that we hit that sweet spot between meeting the demand for the, you know, the state of Colorado market and exceeding that demand because we recognize that that creates pressures on diversion outside of the state and outside of the regulated model. As Barb touched on, edibles are always a challenge. Pesticides are a huge challenge. And I think it's worth noting that things that we, whether it be at the state or the local level, where we're accustomed to getting support and service from the federal government, whether it be the USDA or the Food and Drug Administration or the EPA, you can count on no help from them. So what that means is that you have to fill that gap. So what we've done with pesticides, for example, is we've leaned very heavily on our agricultural department, and they've had to step up to the plate with respect to food safety issues and things like that. The local health departments have to step up or the state health department has to step up. So things, just to recognize that there's going to be gaps that you'll need to fill. Banking continues to be a challenge. It's gotten better since FinCEN had issued some requirements to banks for knowing your customer and what types of requirements that the marijuana businesses would be required to provide to their banks in order to do business with them. It's gotten better. I would like to say it's not that we don't have banking, but the industry is underbanked. And the reality is, if you're a marijuana business and you want to do business with a bank, you're going to pay huge service fees for the cost of compliance so that they can ensure FinCEN compliance. Continuous legislative changes and a lack of federal regulatory assistance. I mean, those are, those are some of the challenges. And again, I appreciate the opportunity, and we're delighted to be able to answer any questions you might have.
Well, we really, Barbara, did you want to say something? Give them a round.
So I just wanted to say that on our Marijuana Enforcement Division website, we have a number of documents. We have all the rules, the statutes, every report that we've done. We have a demand study. We literally had to go out and figure out what was the demand for marijuana consumption in the state of Colorado so that, because one of the things we're responsible for, as Ron mentioned, is making sure that we have, we manage, perform, we do production management. We have to manage that production because we want to make sure it's equal. So we had to figure that out. And that was an interesting thing to figure out, what is the demand for marijuana in your state? The other thing we had to do is identify equivalency because Amendment 64 says that it's lawful to possess one ounce or its equivalent. And so we had to figure out what was the equivalent of one ounce of flour to concentrate and to an edible. And so we've done that as well. So those are the kinds of things that as you are doing what you need to do, if you want to look there, it may prove to be helpful. And before we turn it over to questions, which we are very comfortable answering, I just wanted to say that we have taken this responsibility very, very seriously. We haven't had a lot of puns tonight, and trust me, anytime you talk about marijuana, there's a ton of puns.
I do it all the time. I live for that.
Exactly. And so do we, you know, someone said you're in the weeds in this, and we certainly are. But you have to have maybe a little bit of levity when you work with something like this. But we just want to make sure that it's understood that we have taken this responsibility very, very seriously. When we started down this path, as Ron mentioned, it was a very lonely path. We knew that we were being, that the whole world was watching, and half the world wanted us to fail and the other half wanted us to succeed. And so we did the absolute best job that we could, given the circumstances that we were operating in. So.
Okay. Well, let me just, let's give them one more round of applause. And we've been joined by Lori Ajax with the Chief of the Bureau of Medical Cannabis Regulation in the state of California. And we'll be chatting with you in a few minutes. But what I want to do, and I want to say to the folk that are here, we're going to do the best I can to get to as many of the questions and the statements. But if you guys want to ask them a question, just let's get straight into the point. But we, I know we're going to take advantage of actually having them here, so I would think that we may be asking a little more questions than we normally do. So I know I've been scribbling, and hopefully I can read my own scribble. You talked about a commission that was created, and you were one of the co-chairs, and that it was a very diverse body. How many people were on that?
Oh goodness, I'd say in the task force, there was probably about 35 people that were there, and they were, they represented, as I mentioned, a whole very diverse group of people. But we also had five state, five working groups because it operated kind of like a board and then committees.
Gotcha.
And so the five working groups that we had that were underneath that were the regulatory framework working group because we had to really understand what was that regulatory framework going to be. And then we had a local authority and control because in Colorado, we have a really strong local, local control and local authority. We have what's called home rule cities, and so they get to make a lot of their own rules and ordinances and even do their own taxation. And so we really needed to be able to work very closely-
So basically, it was about 30 people plus about five subcommittees. I would imagine it was throughout-
Right.
-folk from throughout the state. So I wanted to ask you to just talk a minute about, you just said something about the cities. I'm curious as to what the relationship is or was at that time in particular between the city, the cities in the state. Because we, in the city of LA, we anticipate being very aggressive in working, or not aggressive in a negative way, but we will, you know, we look forward to working with the state. I'm wondering what that relationship was like with you guys, and either one of you can-
Well, I'll start, then I'll turn it over. But what it started out as was initially with medical, it was a dual licensing system. So the local jurisdiction had to license before the state could license, and that really actually created some problems for the state. And the reason I said is because with that funding model, we couldn't then, we would get them licensed, they wouldn't be licensed at the state. And since we had that group of operating businesses, we couldn't begin to require ongoing licensing fees. And so that caused some problems. We worked with them pretty closely, though, and we got that addressed. And what it is, is that the state's regulatory system is sort of like the floor, the basis. And if a local jurisdiction wants to just use that, they can. If they want to add additional things, like as you mentioned, that Los Angeles would like to do, they can certainly do that. And we do have certain local jurisdictions that take what we have at the state level, which is pretty robust, and that's good enough. And there are others like Denver that have added a number of other things that they do.
Okay. Yeah, Ron?
Just to add on to that, so Colorado, the way that the Constitution is written allows each local jurisdiction to opt out.
Right.
So we have about 331 local jurisdictions within the state, and there's about 100 that have opted in either to retail, medical, or both. So if you looked at a map of Colorado virtually and cut it in half, the eastern half of the state is virtually dry. They're, they've all opted out of marijuana in either case. So you have, you're left with the Front Range in, on the eastern side of the mountain range, the Rocky Mountains, and then some of the resort communities in the ski areas and in the mountains that have opted in. We enjoy a very good relationship with certainly the city of Denver and some of the larger metropolitan areas and even some of the small local jurisdictions. Many of the local jurisdictions- Many of the local jurisdictions rely very, particularly the smaller ones, rely very heavily on us to offer enforcement and, and guidance to them. Whereas the, the larger metropolitan areas have their own pretty dedicated regulatory programs. But we work very closely with all of them.
Okay, so now, I, I can't remember the, the figure, but what was the total amount or total number of businesses from your outlets to your farms or?
We have about three thousand licensed businesses in the state. About sixteen hundred of them are medical and about fourteen hundred are retail.
Okay, so that's where you actually go and acquire the, the product?
Yeah. Yes.
Or is it a percentage of that, just where they grow it and test it or?
So it's, it's a, and, and we can give you the specific figures, but we have four license types on the retail and medical side. We have a testing facility license. We have about fifteen testing facilities in the state that do both retail and medical. We have cultivation licenses, so they're, they grow the marijuana products. They can also do some limited extraction using cold water extraction. They can't do solvent-based extractions. Then we have the manufacturers, so they make, they, they can do extractions. They can make edible products, tinctures, a whole host of different products. And then you have the stores. So on the medical side, they're called centers and on the retail side, they're called retail stores.
Okay, okay. Do you, I'm assuming you have some form of county government as well, city, county? What is that relationship with, with, with you guys, then the county, then the cities? Because I totally anticipate that the county just got a slower start than us. I'd like to, you know, how do they work together? Because we're going to have to figure out a way to, to work with them as well.
And so that's a good question. So in the unincorporated areas where there's not a city in the county or they're outside of the city limits, in unincorporated areas, the county is, the county commission would, would regulate any marijuana that's authorized in their, in their jurisdiction. Probably the one that's most active in Colorado, or one of the ones that's most active is Pueblo County, which is in the southern, southern front range of the state. It has a little bit milder climate. We actually have some outdoor grows and outdoor cultivation in that area. But that's probably the most active county government because many of those are in agricultural areas and, and outside of the unincorporate, or outside of any city limit.
Okay, and Lori, I hate to just kind of throw you, you know, into the fire, but I do. And then we're going to let you kind of say who you are and all of that. But has it gotten to the point where you've, there's been conversations on the state level where it relates to how the county will be engaged? Will they be able to, to put some kind of, if they chose, a blanket tax that would go, you know, cover all of the cities that fall within that county? Or would it be something just for unincorporated areas? Or have we even gotten there yet or what?
So the dreaded tax question was the first one you asked me. So I'll be, you know what, I, I'm not quite sure on that, on how that's going to work with the taxation between the county and the city. I will leave that best to the Board of Equalizations, who are the experts on that. So I apologize, I, I don't know that.
Don't apologize. So you think there'll be some conversations with our Board of Equalization?
Yes.
Where it relates to, okay.
Yes.
Barbara, you were going to jump in?
I was. The way that it works in Colorado is that the state has, we, we tax at the state level. But in the statutes that came out of the initial Amendment sixty-four, there was an allowance for cities to tax as well. And so the cities could employ their own excise tax or additional sales tax. It was silent on the counties. And so the counties began to, to assess and to require some sort of taxation. And then that went up on appeal because everything about, as you said, the dreaded question on taxation, nobody wants to be taxed. And so as a result, our legislature this year is actually looking at putting it explicitly in statute that the counties can implement their own tax structure as well, in addition to what the state is doing.
And on top of a city that has already, because we just had an election last night where we were authorized to, by eighty percent, almost eighty percent of the voters of the city.
Well, the city will, will tax in the, in the confines of the city. And it's in the unincorporated part of that county that the county will be able to tax after this point.
I, I was, my concern was another layer and that, that's what I was trying to get at. Do you guys allow any type of delivery? That's a conversation that we've had the last few hearings or so.
Well, we haven't up to this point, but right now in our state legislature, there is a bill that is going through that's addressing that delivery process. I will tell you that I'm, it's interesting to me that you say that you're looking at that or that you haven't really done that because one of the, one of the advocacy arguments for delivery in Colorado has been that this is working well in California. So, and what you're going to find is they use us against each other.
We didn't say it isn't done, we said we don't have a policy.
No, they don't pit us, they don't use us. Now, so you allow the cities to, especially Ron, if, if you said there are cities that are just dark and do absolutely nothing. So you leave, you know, distance requirements and all of that up to the local jurisdiction?
So with respect to distance, there is a statutory requirement, a thousand feet, but it does provide local jurisdictions with the ability to, to reduce that.
So there is a state limit at a thousand, but if the local jurisdiction could adjust that?
Yep, and, and many of them have. In, in Colorado, and, and I'm sure you have this too, but you could, you could have conceivably a small jurisdiction that a thousand feet radius of that is outside of the, the, the local jurisdiction itself. I mean, we, we literally have towns that are that small in Colorado. And so the, the schools in the town and there's no way they could conceivably operate that business within, outside of the thousand-foot radius of the school and still be in the, in the local jurisdiction. So, and, and a perfect example, Denver, I think Denver's at six hundred feet. So they, they elected to go below the thousand foot and, and the statute allows them to do that.
Okay, members, I only have a few more and then I'm going to have Lori and then you guys can key up your, your, your questions. Complaints, do the complaints go to a concern like, we, what we're trying to do with this process is to incorporate the folk that live in the community and the industry people so that they can have a forum to kind of go back, back and forth. And some of the community folk have concerns and complaints and what have you. And I think we're doing the best we can to get to know each other and maybe solve some of those things here. But do you guys get complaints about that? Or, or do the complaints go to the city and the state? Or is there a certain type of complaint you get or?
So I, I think what, what we typically see is, is land use and community-related issues typically go to the city. What we tend to get is more issues with a consumer got a product they didn't think was, was either, didn't have the THC in it that it, the label said. Or, or again, a, a very common one we get is other licensees complaining about the guy down the street who's not following the rules.
Okay, well, you said that's pretty, that helps though where it relates to self-policing.
Very much so. We, so we have a, we have a complaint form on our website and we have a hotline number that we affectionately refer to as UFO Hotline because we get some very odd calls on that. But we also get very useful calls. And so we'll, we'll listen to anybody that has a complaint. And, and you know, it, it's just like any law enforcement agency that receives complaints. We look at solvability factors. So, you know, we'll, we'll look at what the complaint is, we'll, we'll talk to the complainant if they give us a name. But sometimes they just don't, they, they want to be anonymous and they don't give us enough real information to, to really react to, so.
Okay, three, three more and then go to Lori. Training of the, the local law enforcement, are you engaged in that at all? And if so, if you could shed some light?
So, so we have office, we have four offices.
I mean, do you have like a blow into a tube and that kind of thing?
Most of what we do in, in interaction with local law enforcement is train them on this, on the regulations. And, and because a lot of the local jurisdictions, their licensing authorities have some connection to their police department or inspection services. And so we really do, we, we do a lot of training on education about the rules and regulations.
So they, they're the ones that basically train their, their force for various signs or whatever? I mean, because we know it's not like an alcoholic product.
Right.
Where you can easily tell?
The one, the one thing that, at the state level, we've used some of the tax cash fund money. The, the state has the General Assembly to appropriate for our Attorney General's Office has the Peace Officer Certification Program. And they, they do a grant program for A-Ride testing, which is drug recognition test or drug recognition training for officers. So they've used some of the tax money to fund actual training across the state of Colorado for local law enforcement officers.
You have some kind of a program that ensures that minorities are afforded an opportunity to actually get in the business to do more than just work at the shops? To make sure that women are, that there's a diverse, and if, if you have some programs, I'd be just a little curious.
No, we don't. The way that the process works is there's a really stringent kind of background check requirements that have to be met. And what we will do is we just take each application as it comes in for the business itself and for the owners and we will then just manage that. But there really isn't anything at the state that's, that is kind of a set aside or kind of an MBE, DBE or SB type of situation. This is a largely very cash-intensive business. And to, and the truth of the matter is that to get into it and to do it well and to be able to comply with all of this, it takes a lot of money. And so I'm not saying that, you know, minority communities can't, can't do this, but I will tell you that, that is not one of the things that we look at.
Okay.
Because we don't have limitations.
Yeah, that's fair. And I know, we know it's going to be a challenge, but it's also something that we're committed to try to come up with a formula that works. We have to. It would be, it would be impossible for us in this city not to do that. And so we were, we were hoping that we might be able to borrow an idea or two. The last thing I want to ask for now is I anticipate as we move forward with these hearings that there's going to be a conversation about, do we want to attempt to eliminate the black market, illegal sales and, and, you know? And if so, I see, I thought I had a note somewhere that said, I can't find it, that you guys closed at around seven. But is that when your assembly meets or what have you? Have, have they, have they viewed this at all as maybe a tool to use to reduce, you know, illegal businesses? Or, and, and I mean, street businesses, not just your outlets or retails or retailers or whatever you call them?
So you're asking a really complex question and, and I think it's a really, really good one. And, and I'm going to answer it this way. And that is, one of the things that we attempted to do when we established the demand study that we did was to try to also figure out whether or not we were meeting that demand through the regulated industry. But at the same time, taking a look at what was happening outside of that regulated industry because I think that's really a relevant piece of that. And so what I will tell you is that we are satisfying about seventy-five percent of the demand in the state by the regulated industry and by the, the business model. So that sounds really, really good. The problem that we're facing is that we have a pretty lax personal growth and caregiver model that we are attempting every year to go in and tighten up to some extent. And what that does is that it, we're not saying that the people who are growing in their homes or that the caregivers are necessarily doing anything wrong. But what it does is it creates kind of a gray area. So law enforcement, when they go to a home, they don't know whether this is a, this is a black market grow or if this is a caregiver grow or if this is a personal growth and it's just, you know, twelve people in the same home. And so there's not a really good bright line test. And so what we are seeing is that there are groups that have come into the state and are actually sort of hiding in plain sight. They're taking kind of advantage of that because there is that ambiguity for our local law enforcement. And so one of the things that our local law enforcement has asked for quite a bit is to have more of a bright line test so that they know exactly how many plants can be in a house for personal growth and no more. And for us, so they can really kind of see what is actually illegal and what is the black market. And the reason I say that's a complex question is because if you want to address your black market, you're going to have to take a look at what is causing your gray slash black market to, to flourish. And we're not really seeing that the times are as much of an, an indicator of that or a proponent of that. But what we do see is that people start to go to different jurisdictions that have different time, timeframes. So if a jurisdiction closes up or allows for businesses to stay open until midnight, for example, then people are going to go there after seven instead of into, you know, the local, the other area that maybe might close up at seven.
So do you, do they have different hours of operation?
Yes, the local jurisdiction can establish that. In Amendment sixty-four, it allowed them to establish time, place, manner and number.
Okay, all right. You know, I'm going to have my colleagues jump in, but Lori, we really appreciate you, you coming down. Maybe you could share with us a little bit about you and where you hope to, I mean, this is a, a big lift, but you know, how you hope to lift it and what is your vision? And we, again, on behalf of this committee, we do appreciate you coming. Let's give Lori a round of applause from Sacramento.
Thank you very much for having me. I always, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk about what we're doing at the state because I think it's so important to communicate with the local jurisdiction on what we're doing at the state level, especially since you're such a big part of this, being that we do have local control. And so the, you know, the opportunity to get out and talk to you folks is, is really appreciated. So as most of you know, I was appointed to this position last year and it started out as developing the state, first state regulatory system for medicinal cannabis. And then that got expanded last November to also include adult use. So the Bureau, along with the two other licensing authorities, because it's, it's just not the Bureau. The Bureau has, is issuing the license, regulating the licenses for the dispensaries, the transporters, the distributors and the testing labs. And then we work in conjunction with Department of Food and Agriculture, who regulates the cultivators and the Department of Public Health, who will be regulating the manufacturers. So it is a very collaborative process with all three of us. And we've been working a lot on the regulations. And those, of course, are the, the, the rules that we're going to have in for the licensees. They're going to further explain the statute for each license type. It's going to talk about where our regulations are going to address our licensing fees, what the application requirements, and then of course, the requirements for each license type. Similar to Colorado, we're going to establish the base for all licensees to follow in the state and then the, the locals can be more restrictive. It is, under medical, it's dual licensing. We can't issue a license until they actually have their local license permit or other authorization. And then under the adult use, it, we can't issue a license that goes against any local ordinance or regulation. So definitely local control. And as all of you know, in California, that's a lot of locals, over five hundred in the state of California. So, you know, a So, you know, a lot of, you know, outreach. So we did, uh, uh, last year, we did a lot of outreach, we did informational sessions, we did pre-regulatory meetings at 17 locations across the state. And we are, uh, have, have, have developed, uh, all three licensing authorities, we are in the final stages of completing our medical regulations. And we plan to notice those sometime in April. We're, we're hoping around early to mid-April, those will be noticed. And what that means is, is that we're, you know, it's something to think about. Uh, we had already been working a lot on the medical regulations when adult use passed in November. And really a lot of, uh, between the two statutes, there's a lot of similarities between them, but there's some differences. So, so our plan is, a lot of those similarities, our regulations aren't going to change between medical and adult use, they're, they're going to be the same. Uh, the issue really comes with those differences and how do we address those, um, through, uh, the, the rulemaking timelines that we have. And I don't know how many of you know that, I think there's 43 bills currently at the legislature right now that deals with cannabis and aligning some of those differences. So the plan is to propose those medical regulations this next, uh, next month. And then, uh, we go immediately out to a 45-day comment period. And I, I always like to, it, they're proposed regulations, by the way, they're not final.
Got you.
And, uh, so we want people to read them, uh, weigh in, let us know if what we have right, but probably even more, we want to know what we didn't get right, how, you know, we of course want the locals, we want industry, we want the public, we want everybody to weigh in. And then we may, if we make changes, then we go out to an additional comment period. Uh, because there's a lot of steps to the California rulemaking process, because we can't do all of the adult use because we don't know what's going to happen with legislation. Uh, once, we're going to go through the summer, see what happens. We expect there'll be some trailer bill language that'll come out from the governor. And then those differences that do get aligned, we're going to address those, uh, through the emergency, uh, regulation process. We do have authority under, uh, the proposition 64 to do that, to address that. So we can finalize both sets of regulations by the end of 2017. So we can meet our statutory mandate under proposition 64, which requires us to start issuing licenses on January 1st on 2018. So that's a little synopsis of where we're at right now in the process.
Okay, I just have one thing, uh, that, uh, we really appreciate, uh, Barbara and Ron, but, and they've been a wealth of information, but one thing that you said that just keeps going through my head, that this is going to take longer than anticipated, that it's going to cost more than we thought, and it's going to be way harder than we thought. So I, I, that's some sage advice and we will remember that. So I want to see, uh, do you guys want to jump in first and ask some questions? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, uh, all for coming in, uh, being with us, uh, today and sharing your, uh, experience in the state of Colorado. Uh, I had questions about, uh, you mentioned that there were moratoriums in, uh, some jurisdictions, and I just wanted to hear sort of what the history of that was, how they arrived at that, how they got to the point where they decided they wanted to do a moratorium.
I can jump, sure. Um, well, probably the one that's most pronounced is in the city of Denver and, um, you, you know, the adage out there was that there were more dispensaries and, and stores on street corners than there were Starbucks. And I think there was, um, a, a sense in that community that the, the density of, of marijuana businesses, not unlike what, what you see from time to time with, with liquor licenses, um, that, that one of the, one of the considerations is density. And, and so I think the, the concern in the city of Denver, um, and of course, I'm not trying to speak for the city council there, but I, I think one of the big driving factors was the density and, and concerns with, with over, over density of, of licenses within, uh, within their jurisdiction. Because, um, uh, we don't have any restrictions at the state level. Uh, we, we, uh, Barbara can, can, uh, control the density, but we've taken the position, um, at least at this time, that we, we have other safeguards in place to control the production management, uh, by individual license. And so, everybody has the opportunity to, to apply and fail or succeed as, as a business. Um, but certainly, we don't have the considerations that you all do with, with density and quality of life and issues in the community. And I think that was the driving factor between, or, or behind at least the city of Denver moratorium, um, that they, they just felt like they're, they were getting too, too over dense.
Um, and then you all talked about the, I believe, if I understand it correctly, you said that the state doesn't issue a license where the applicant hasn't met all the local requirements?
Actually, what I said was that there are requirements in the statute, uh, that we, every applicant has to go through a background check.
Right.
Uh, if you're an owner, you have to go through not only that background check, which is a fingerprint-based FBI background check, but you also have to go through a financial background check. And so, it's basically making sure that we can follow the money as in gaming, where the money's coming from and where the money is going to. So those are the kinds of, uh, requirements that they have to, to meet. There were, uh, in addition, there are other things, like, uh, there were some, uh, at one point, when we first started down this path many, many years ago, there was an automatic bar if there was any drug conviction. And now that has changed. So there, the drug conviction can be within, I think, five years. And as long as that is within five years, um, uh, and it's also one that would have been not a crime had it been committed, had the action occurred based on what the law was today, kind of thing. Uh, then those are, that's no longer an automatic bar. And so there was, those are the kinds of things that have been, uh, improved upon. Uh, but now the local restrictions, the local requirements, the local jurisdiction does that. And with regard to, um, medical, it's still a dual license system, but we will li, the state will license and then we just don't let them operate until they receive their medical license. And it's the same thing on the recreational, the retail side. We will license as well, but once, um, but they cannot operate until they get a local approval. And some of them will, uh, you know, do an actual approval, some of them, it's just kind of pro forma. And some of them will do an actual needs and desires hearing, like you do in liquor.
Uh, ju- just to follow up on that, so the, so we issue that state license, they have a year.
Right.
To get the local license.
Right.
So they, they, they have a license in good standing with the state, does not allow them to operate the business until they have the local license. And if they can't get it within a year, the, uh, the state license is automatically revoked at the end of that year.
Thank you, that's it for me.
And Lori, do we program with the other states to, you know, you send staff, or would it even be worth this city or this committee to maybe send someone to see how the state operates? But Lori, how do, how, how are you guys getting your information, since we have the benefit of individuals that have boldly, boldly gone before, we haven't, you know, uh, I'm just curious?
Yeah, we have staff talking to all the different states, Colorado, Oregon, Washington, Alaska, and, um, they've always been very generous with, I think they have a lot of states calling them, by the way, just not California. Um, you know, I, I think the, 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 we learn a lot, especially a lot of lessons learned. The, the thing that I think people, uh, there, you know, I've had people ask, well, why don't we just take Colorado regulations and just adopt them? But they, they do have different, uh, statutes in place than we do in California. Uh, like, one of the things, like the distributorship model, that's fairly, that's unique to California. Nobody else has that model. So there, there are a lot that we can learn from them, but some of it, we are, it's because of our statute that we're pioneering certain parts of this. So I, I always think visiting them, if, you know, is a great idea, too, just to see how their state regulatory system is working and seeing it from the ground up.
Okay, you guys do have a lot of states calling you?
We have probably met with the overwhelming majority, we've met with everyone that has legalized, we have met with most of them that are thinking about legalizing, and we have met with other countries and, uh, that are thinking about it or have, or have some, you know, thing that they're doing with it. We travel, as we do here, we have traveled around the country, and we've also dra- traveled to other countries as well.
Mm-hmm. Do you think as we get more states that get engaged, that this will have a, a direct effect on the federal government?
Oh, that's a hard question. Uh, and, you know, I don't know. Uh, I, I will tell you that, um, you know, one of the things that we did back when we were in the middle of two, the year 2013, as we continued to work with the US Attorney for the, the region that Colorado was in, um, he was actually a, a friend of mine, and so I would call him on a continuous basis and say, what are you doing and what is the Department of Justice doing? Because we're moving forward absent you telling us something differently. Because we didn't know at the time if they were going to come in and file for an injunctive relief and just put the whole, you know, thing on hold. And, but absent them telling us what they were going to do, we just had to continue to move forward. And so, how we've operated this, and, and I said this to someone today, uh, today or yesterday, and that is, you cannot be in this, with, with the federal regulatory scheme the way that it is right now, you cannot be in this industry, you can't regulate this industry, or you can't advise this industry unless you are somewhat comfortable with ambiguity. Uh, because that's all that we can have certainty over, is that we're not really certain what's going to happen. Uh, I think that what will, it, what's going to be more helpful is the more robust and controlled regulatory environment that the states have, the better chance we have for continuing to go in this path. The more lax, I think that's going to feed the fodder for those peop, those, those folks that would like to see this fail.
Well, you may have to vouch for us with the federal government. I don't, I don't know where we are on their list these days, but, uh, yeah, so we, we may need some help. Okay, Ron, did you want to say something or can I? Go ahead.
Real quick, I, I think it's just the evolution of, of this new regulatory model and this new adventure that we're embarking on in the United States. And, and that is, um, in, in the liquor industry, we have a, a National Association of State Liquor Administrators, where there, there's a forum for states to get together and talk about liquor regulation. And in the gaming industry, we have NAGRA, um, and, and we're, which is National Association of Gaming Regulators. We're starting to try and launch that for state, state, at least state-level regulators. Uh, and we're working in cooperation with Lori and, and, uh, Washington State and Oregon and, and some of the, the other states in the country because there's a value in us sharing best practices and, and having a, a medium to do that. Um, and, and to that point also, even on the local level, uh, this past year, the city of Denver did a, a conference for, for local jurisdictions. Um, and, and so we're starting to see some of that, but it's, we're, we're starting really to catch our breath, at least we are. Lori is out of breath right now, but, um, but we're starting to catch our breath and kind of settle down and start looking at some of those qualitative things that we all need to be doing and sharing best practices. I think it will come with time.
Thank you. So let's see what, uh, what the folk here, if they have questions for you, if they just want to make statements. So I'm going to ask for Hal Lewis. And like I said, I'm going to try to get through every one of these, so I need you guys to be straight to the point. Uh, and I may be unsuccessful in getting through all of them, but you guys know me, you know I'd like to hear from you. So Hal Lewis, Lisa Sarkin, Jay Handel, and Peter Story, please come forward. Yes, identify yourself.
Good to see you.
Hey, my man, I can tell by the hat, okay, I see you.
Yeah, great to see you all, and I want to thank you, uh, Lori, for coming down and for the representatives from Colorado. I was actually in your great state of Colorado six weeks ago touring hemp farms because I have one of the first hemp farms in the state of California. We actually planted hemp because of Prop 64, January 1st, in LA County, not LA City. Um, but, you know, a couple of the concerns that, that I had personally for our, our chair here is that I want to make sure that the small people have a stake at the table. We only have 20 people in our collective or cooperative. So we want to make sure that we have a voice with you, and I know we do. Uh, one thing I noticed on Colfax Avenue in Colorado is that there were 78 dispensaries, some of them three next to each other, two across the street. We saw a lot of that. And I actually liked it because it gives the competition in business and it brings the cream to the top, you know? And I thank you folks for doing that in Colorado because I'd like to see that here, too, where we're able to have that type of business here. I travel extensively to different areas, looking at their, the way they're doing things to bring it back here, to see if we could actually do the same thing here in California.
That's cool, Hal. You know, real quick, Hal brings up, I'm curious, because every time we have a hearing, somebody talks about small businesses and being able to protect small businesses. How, how does that work in, 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 in your state? Are they all shapes and sizes or primaria? Just?
We, we have a broad spectrum from very small operators with, you know, that grow less than 1,800 plants, kind of artisan companies, um, all the way up to the, kind of the big box, um, uh, conglomerations that, you know, do mass, mass production.
What's mass, define mass production?
Um, we, I mean, we have warehouses that are in excess of 100,000 plants at any one time.
All right, next speaker?
Lisa Sarkin, you just asked my question, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Handel?
Yes, thank you. Jay Handel, again, speaking as a, uh, from the budget team. I'd like to ask the people from Colorado, um, number one, what is your budget for enforcement? What is your budget for your initial licensing when you first got the program going? I'll give you all the questions. Uh, what is your budget for compliance, the compliance end of what you do? And what was the cost to actually set your guys' department up in the very beginning to be able to monitor everything? Uh, and my only other comment to our council people and our council president is, steal them. Steal them now. Thank you.
I do love California, so. We, we'll, we'll talk later. Uh, no, I'm teasing. Um, so can I answer something about the small businesses real quickly?
Go, please, 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 please.
And, and one of the things that I think that's, that's also helpful in Colorado is, is when we started with medical, we required common ownership. That meant that in order to have a store, you also had to ha, or a center, you also had to have a cultivation. And I think we can all agree that it's the cultivation that has, is the more, um, expensive, uh, portion of the license that, that, that there is. Uh, the store can be a little bit, uh, less expensive. And so, with recreational marijuana, what we did is we allowed for, after the first nine months, to allow people to, uh, just focus on the, and, and, on the, on the portion of the supply chain that they wanted to focus on. So if you only wanted to be a cultivator, you could just have a license for that. If you only wanted to be a storefront, you could get a license for that. And so, um, that is one of the ways that I think that we can also address some of the smaller businesses if they choose to just go into maybe a storefront. Um, with regard to costs, um, when we started, we had, um, an appropriation of almost 100, but then that was cut in half right away. So we had an appropriation for 55, uh, full-time equivalents, so 55 individuals. And we had about a $7 million budget at that time, but we were only bringing in about 2 million. So it wasn't really, we weren't satisfying the, the requirements that we needed and we couldn't get the money in to actually do this. What we have up to this point, so that has continued to grow. We have, uh, also had a, uh, the money that we needed in order to create the, uh, inventory tracking system, its metric. And so that was, uh, about one or $2 million, I believe, $2 million. And, but ultimately, right now, what our budget is and what our appropriation is for our spending authority for the Marijuana Enforcement Division is about 12.2 million dollars. And we have appropriation for 108 individuals there. And they run the gamut of licensing and compliance and criminal investigation, uh, and a number of those kinds of things. But it's important to note that where that money comes from is from tax. And so, I also have the tax division within me, and we have 19 people that do the tax work. And we have those, those are field auditors and those are tax examiners and special agents and numbers of those things. And it, um, is about 1.3 million a year for that group. But we also had our tax system that had to be modified, and that was about, I'd say about a one and a half million dollar, uh, investment there as well.
Thank you. Peter Story?
Hi, yes, that is my real name.
There you go.
Uh, thanks, uh, so much for listening. My name's Peter Story, I just want to introduce myself. I'm the president of an organization called HopeGrown, with a P, HopeGrown. We're one of the larger cannabis websites on the internet, and what we are in a sense is a finder website, which means we help guide patients to doctors and/or dispensaries. We compete with websites like Weed Maps or Leafly, but what separates us from those websites is we are the only website on the internet to vet the doctors and the collectives, to make sure that the network we list, those entities, are abiding by local laws and regulations. And that's been a huge struggle for us, because we've built this from the outside in as concerned citizens. You know, the reason why Los Angeles is in the gray space, is in the black space, is because of uninformed citizens. They don't know what's legal or not. They don't know that a collective should be pre-Ico and Prop D compliant. They think that if it's open and there is a sign, the city has approved them. And so we have lots and lots of Southern California residents going into illegal businesses and giving money over to drug cartels and what the like. And we're taking businesses away from legitimate ones. So thank you.
Rita Via? Eva Holmes? Eva Holmes? Doug Fitzsimmons?
I just, Ms. Rita Via, I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight. Your experience is invaluable to us. I'd also like to thank this committee and Council President Weston and his staff, Andrew Westhall, who has done a stellar job, I think, in trying to bring all of the various people in our community together, those involved in the industry and other stakeholders as well, to assist in having input into the process. And we're very grateful for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
First, let me welcome you to Southwest College. We are very proud of our institution.
Thank you.
I am Eva Holmes, the community activist and the community liaison for all of the schools in the southwest area. I have been here since 6:15 this morning, and I'm a little tired. We thought the meeting was going to be at 4:00.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, it's okay. I'm still here. Our concern, oh, okay, I represent Reparations United Front and the West Athens Westmont Community Task Force. We meet every Tuesday from 10 to 12 at the Chester-Washington Golf Course. Retired school administrator, so we are interested in the children and the location of the businesses as far as how close they will be to the schools. And we are hoping that the churches will get involved. And we are truly concerned about what are we going to tell our children. But the parents and the families are going to have to make that, oh, was that the bell?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Welcome to-
I was getting ready to tell you.
Well, no, it's okay. Welcome to Southwest College and come back.
Thank you. Doug, I guess you're, you're next?
Yes, so I'm Doug Fitzsimmons. I'm president of the South Robertson Neighborhoods Council, Chair of the Westside Regional Alliance of Councils, and for the past number of months, a participant in the council president's working group on medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. And again, I would just like to echo how important I think that effort has been. We're seeing it in the initial legislation that you put forward tonight, that you'll consider. Our neighborhood council will look at that and make recommendations. There are some individual things, though, that I'd like to emphasize, that the importance of, again, local ownership, local control of businesses, and the social justice component, particularly when we talk about training, perhaps incubators, ways of developing a, no pun intended, homegrown class of businesses.
Go on, ask the last. Quick, quick.
Sure. Yeah, okay. So one thing that does concern me particularly, though, is the abbreviated length of the licensing period that we're setting up here. If we're looking to start doing hearings in September, issuing licenses by January 1st, we really do need to have an unambiguous process that doesn't create gray areas, which will ultimately create friction within our neighborhoods and increase resistance within.
Okay. And any other ideas, Doug, that you have? Get to Drew. Andrew disappeared. No, he didn't. He's over there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, are there conversations going on in your state? Or even Lori, do you anticipate them? Where creating facilities where an individual can go and acquire this product, like a weed bar? I'm serious. You know, and I mean, are there any, because you say things happen in the legislature, and I've had a couple of people say things to me. I'm just curious, do you, does that kind of stuff come up?
So that's a great question, because as I alluded to earlier, in Colorado, you can't openly and publicly consume. And then, you know, visitors come to the state and they don't have a place to go. Actually, we have two bills, one of which died recently in committee, but we have another bill, a private social club bill, that is navigating its way through the legislative process right now, that would enable individuals to bring their marijuana to the club in order to consume.
Would be like a social club?
Yeah.
Like a cigar lounge of sorts?
Yeah, very similar, yeah.
Would they, anyway, okay. Seth? No, I'm just asking. Seth, Hilsavet, yes, Seth, you're next. And Gregory, I'm gonna let you say the last name. I'm tired, man. I've been going since election night. Marilyn Wilcher, come forward. And I think I have, if Ms. Price, Judy Price, is still here. Okay, good. And if whoever gets to the mic, just take your time when you get to the mic, and just ask a question. So Judy, your question's answered. Gotcha. Okay.
Good evening, council members.
Yes.
And Ms. A. Jackson, people from Colorado, thank you for coming. This is very, very helpful. I'm Seth Hilsavet, CEO of Quality Concentrates and a board member of the Southern California Coalition. I just want to congratulate the city council on the big victory last night, in order to get appropriate regulations moving forward. And I guess my main question is, with all of the different testing facilities that you have in your state, kind of whatever the different pitfalls and successes that you've had with that, and have you had large problems with product recalls because of that, things like that, and what challenges, you know, we may need to look forward to?
Do you want me to take it?
Go ahead, Mel.
So as I had indicated, I mean, rolling out the testing program has been challenging. We work very closely with our Department of Public Health and Environment. Unfortunately, we're not equipped to really evaluate, you know, the proficiency of the facility. So we work very closely with our Department of Public Health and Environment, and we're right now launching a proficiency program. So I think the challenge is making sure that we have our laboratories operating in the same way and providing good, effective, and accurate results to our licensees. And obviously, that's a consumer safety issue. Again, pesticides are really a tough, challenging area for us, but we're working through it. And the great thing is that, at least the testing community in the state of Colorado work together, while they recognize they're in competition with one another. They have a pretty active association. They meet regularly. And they meet cooperatively with not only the Marijuana Enforcement Division, but also with the Public Health Department in the state. And we're working it out. But it's definitely a challenge. Proficiency is a key step for us, though.
But the other thing is going to be the ability to determine which plants were contaminated. And then, when you talk about a recall, being able to go back and do a track and trace and figure out exactly what happened. And so one of the things that we do as well is that, for example, with pesticides, when we identify that a certain number of plants or certain specified plants have been contaminated with pesticides that have been deemed in the state of Colorado not to be allowable, then we can actually, through the metric system, the inventory tracking system, determine whether or not those plants have left that facility. And if they haven't, we can hold them there while we do a lot of other analysis and investigation. If they have, we can track where they went, where they went into certain edibles, which ones, because of that RFID technology that goes all the way to sale. And we have even had recalls of products, as well as by actual lot number and things like that, so that the public can actually bring those back. And we actually had a number of those with regard to pesticides, I would say, late fall, quite a bit there. So there's kind of a connection of both those two things. You have to be able to identify what the kinds of, you know, things that are going to be failing, and then you have to be able to figure out which products were actually a part of that failure.
Thank you, guys.
That help? Okay, quickly, have you got, and don't, I'm just asking the question. I'm just asking the question, because I'm curious. Has there been conversation of about state-controlled grows or state stores?
You know, we talked about that when we were doing the task force back in 2013, and we had an individual who is a scholar and a constitutional scholar. And what he advised us and what we really decided was that that was not something that Colorado wanted to do, because it would put us probably in conflict with the Controlled Substances Act, and it would put us in conflict with, definitely with the federal government and the DEA. In addition, the way that the amendment was written, it was, it implied that it would be individuals that would be able to do that kind of work.
Gotcha, gotcha. Lori, real quick, because Seth brought it up, I thought, referenced. So are you working with our health and human services and?
Yeah, on testing labs, because that, we are licensing the testing laboratories, and that, originally in the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, it was with Public Health, and then with the budget trailer bill last July, it got to us. So we are working, they're helping with us, because we don't have the expertise in-house at the Bureau. So they're helping us develop those regulations. And then we also have the Department of Pesticide Regulations, and they're developing the guidelines for the acceptable level of pesticide residue in all the cannabis. So we're working with them. It is a tough issue. We've, you know, Oregon's having some issues right now, just getting their cannabis through testing. So it's one of those things where there's not a lot of data out there on consumption data, on doing a lot of tests. And so California, hopefully, we're going to be able to provide some of that in the coming year, but it's not there right now.
All right, thanks. So, sorry, sir.
Good evening, honorable guests and honorable council members. First off, I'd like to, my name is Gregory McGarian, CEO of Koenga Caregivers, Inc., vertically-integrated dispensary cultivation facility in Los Angeles, and I'm the Chair for Veterans with the Southern California Coalition. And I'd like to first off, thank our council members for spearheading this and really grasping it and taking charge, and for the passage of Proposition M last night. And we look forward to continue working with you. My question is specifically, the black market and delivery. And I heard that you guys said in Colorado, you currently don't have delivery, but you have something on the books for delivery currently, correct? And I wanted to know, do you think that having a legal delivery system would reduce the black market?
So again, we have a bill going through our legislature right now that would authorize delivery for medical only, not for retail. And some of the arguments being made is the accessibility is an issue for some, particularly for some patients, and that by providing a means for them to have delivery of their regulated licensed marijuana would probably have an impact on the black market, you know? And I think it's anecdotal. Obviously, there's no data or anything to drive that, but certainly those are some of the arguments being made in Colorado.
Okay. Marilyn?
Yes.
And then after that, Patrick?
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, councilpersons, experts from Colorado. We have drive-through restaurants, pharmacies. Are there drive-through dispensaries?
Another great question. So we have several that are working through the process of opening.
Really?
Yes. I'm not sure they'll open or not, but as long as they can demonstrate that they meet all of the requirements within our rules and regulations, and there's no prohibition in the law, we'll see how they do. But obviously, very cautiously watching that one. And we're doing a lot of additional due diligence upfront on that, to, you know, we do, we do a lot of pre-opening activities with our licensees, and certainly this one will attract even more attention from us, to just make sure that it's done responsibly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So Patrick and Kat, I didn't even see her come in. Kat and Ruben Hong, and I'll keep going, Misty Wilks? Lu, is that Lucas Lucas? Come on down. Okay, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Weston and fellow council members. My name is Patrick Goldberg-McMan. I own a licensed dispensary cultivation and manufacturing facility in Cathedral City, California. I am, however, a longtime resident of Venice Beach. As a legitimate cannabis business owner, I look forward to expanding my business into Los Angeles. I would like to publicly congratulate Chairman Weston and the rest of the council for their efforts in bringing regulation to the world's largest cannabis market. I have been through the licensing process and look forward to offering any help I can as a member of the LA Cannabis Task Force. Thank you and congratulations on your efforts.
Thank you. Didn't I meet you the last time you and I chatted? Yeah.
You got it right once again.
Yeah, well, I try. For an old man, I try. Hey, good to see you. Kat?
Hello.
Hello to you.
How are you?
I'm hanging in there.
Hello, everyone.
I don't know about these two, but I'm hanging.
Everyone seems to be doing okay.
Okay.
Hello, folks. My name is Kat Packer. I'm a policy coordinator with the Drug Policy Alliance. Thank you to the experts who've come from Colorado. Thank you to Lori Ajax for joining us here in Los Angeles. I think it's quite a shame that Colorado hasn't done anything specifically to help those minorities who have been harmed by the drug war. One of the things that, one of the creeds that I live by is through Michelle Alexander. She says that nothing has contributed more to the systematic mass incarceration of people of color in the United States in the war on drugs. And we know that most drug arrests in the United States have been for simple marijuana possession. And so I think that it's incumbent of us and folks who are participating in the regulatory framework to make sure that we acknowledge, repair, and protect those communities that have been harmed by the war on drugs. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to see you. Okay.
Good evening, Council President Weston, council members. Thank you for coming down again, Lori, to Los Angeles and our friends from Colorado. My name is Ruben Honig. I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Cannabis Task Force. I just want to take a quick second to congratulate the city, to congratulate all stakeholders, the citizens of Los Angeles. Last night was a tremendous victory that has reverberations around, across this country, not just in the state and in the city. So thank you for all your work, and to Andrew for, you know, putting forth Measure M and everyone that was involved. My question for our friends from Colorado is, you spoke about, you know, there was the question about small businesses, and you spoke before about the changing, I guess, financial fitness to participate in a regulated industry versus an unregulated industry? From your data, is there any sort of information about the difference, the differences there, and what a business would need to have in terms of financial fitness to participate? And does that kind of exclude smaller to medium-sized businesses, in your opinion?
So in our financial background investigation process, while it's a consideration, it's not typically a license decision consideration, our number one priority is making sure we understand the source of the funds being used to invest in, and making sure that they're from a lawful source. I cannot think of a time where we denied a license- I cannot think of a time where we denied a license based on their lack of financial fitness. So, it is a consideration, but the bigger consideration from our perspective is, is there a lawful source of funds and what is that source?
Good afternoon, my name's Lucas Lucas, and I'm a member of the Minority Cannabis Business Association, one of, it's not many of us down here, it's an organization based out of Oregon. And my question's for our friends, hey Lori, my question's for our friends from Colorado. I noticed, and this is the second night in a row that I brought up, someone brought up minorities, and the first answer was, well, you've got to have a lot of money for this, and the rules are tough. And that's a little upsetting, because we know in this country right now that we're working real hard to get policemen who are local, and they can explain things to the local guys, and if you don't have people in line and charged to explain it to them, then eventually, the people who need the most help won't get instructed. As a matter of fact, in June, NPR reported that in Colorado, marijuana arrests for white males between the age of 10 and 17 fell by 10% between 2012 and 2014, while arrests for Latinos and Black youths respectively rose. More than 20% for Latinos and more than 50% for Black youth. So, this is, this is, this is kind of disturbing to hear you guys say, you know, a lot of people don't-
Hey, well, Lucas, we're, not to answer for them-
Okay.
But we're in California, we're in LA. It would be unintelligent for us not to ask them the question and to learn from these things. Barbara's saying it's costing a lot of dough. We need to know these things as we're trying to put in place a policy that ensures that people of color participate. I want to know why they find it challenging, but I didn't, you know, I didn't invite them so that you could touch them up. Touch me up. Touch me up.
No, no, no. I didn't want to touch you. No, no, no. I didn't want to try to touch you. Please.
I'm wiring. You can touch me up, man.
Yeah, I'm a little new to this, I'm not, I'm not a part of, I've never been trained to do this or anything, I'm just a grower here in LA.
I got you, I got you, that's-
Excuse my decorum, if I'm out of place.
No, man, you excuse, hey, last card I'm going to take, because I want to maybe be able to invite them back, and so, the last card will be Sherry. I think it's Sherry, is that Ranklin?
Cherie Franklin.
Okay, Cherie, is that, is that you?
No, this is Misty Wilks.
No, but I hear, I know you, but wait a minute, come on now, that is, that's not a F, that's a R, look at it, look at it. Yeah, see? I don't know, I've got, I've got more, but I'm just saying, this is the last one. Misty, good to see you again.
Once again, I had to come into town just to get to talk to you.
I was going to ask, where'd you come from?
Not too far, Temecula.
Okay.
Good afternoon, all, actually, I'm going to tell you why I'm asking my question before I ask my question, and it's for our out-of-town guests. At least once or twice a week in my community where I volunteer at a tutoring service, I have to walk outside and ask someone in their car to stop smoking weed, because it comes inside and the children can smell it. We've also had a business owner leave the area for that same reason. I'm wondering if you all have had any problems with public consumption at all, and if so, how have you handled it?
Good question.
Do you want to take that? You want me to?
Thank you. Actually, there is, you know, there is some public consumption going on, I will tell you that it's probably not much more than what was going on before. And so, that's one of the things that we found out with Amendment 64, was that the people that were consuming before are still consuming, the people that weren't are still not, and for the most part, and you can come, you can go by some of the parks and you can smell it. And that is one of the things that, but it is, one of the things that's difficult to address, and the reason is because if you come in from out of the state, there really is no place to consume in a way that is not openly or in public. But the amendment does say, and it was very clear, that it could not be consumed openly or in public, and so, as a result, local law enforcement does cite individuals. Now, they, you know, they don't cite every single person probably, because that would, they don't have the resources to do that, but they do cite when they do identify that. I will tell you that I do believe that's one of the reasons that the social consumption bill that we were just talking about is going through our legislature right now, is because people want to have a place where they're not consuming in their homes, especially if they have children, they want to consume someplace, they don't want to do it outside, because it is bothering their neighbors, so they want to find a place where they can do it, where they can have some peace, they can have other people have peace, and they can do it in a way that's lawful. That is one of the things that I think has to be thought about when you're looking at these kinds of programs, is it's, and let's face it, somebody said in a committee hearing that we were both listening to this week, that it smells skunky, and skunky is okay, well, maybe some people don't like that smell, and so, you know, some people don't like cigars, and so, we have to be, I think, respectful of those things, and it is a question and a concern, and you raise a really good point.
Is that it, Ms.? Or is that Sherry? Now, I just got confirmation from Marquis that that looks like a R, because I know you, I would have been able to call your name. I can say Franklin now, some of the other ones are tongue-twisted, but I can say Franklin. Anyway, good to see you.
Nice to see you, and I just wanted to tell you, when we initially spoke, to you, Council President, you said, do something, make sure that people in our community are at the table, and from that, I want you to know that we've moved forward. We're creating an incubator, an accelerator hub in South Los Angeles, we're partnering with local nonprofits, Noreen McClendon's in the house, she's going to do some vocational training, we're talking to experts like Ms. Yana that's sitting in the front row about making sure that we understand how to do this right. We met with Casa Verde earlier today, they have great technologies that they put together, and looking at seat-to-sale, we're bringing that talent to the table. L.A. EDC has given us interns to look at some of the market and job issues, and how those are transferable skills, and we plan to open up business source centers in our communities, CD-10, CD-9, CD-8, CD-15, CD-14, right here, so that urban entrepreneurs have an opportunity to walk in the door, get the expertise, and know that this is not rocket science. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I want Yvette, Stanford, and Noreen, we're going to let you be the closer. So, where's Yvette? Okay, come on down. I wish I had a prize for you, but I can still say, come on down. All right, hi there.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, council and visitors. My name is Hope Yvette, I'm very pleased that Measure M passed, as I intend to pursue a retail license. I will say, I'm hoping that LA will open the business opportunities, not just employment, but the business opportunities, to truly be accessible for the actual residents of LA, including many minorities that look like myself. We think about equal opportunity for employees, but not so much in business. If it were a federally legal business, there would be maybe certain advantages that municipalities could put into place, like scoring points for women-owned businesses or minority-owned businesses, but in this kind of a business, it's kind of a dog-eat-dog situation, and so, I have actually already experienced this as an applicant in another jurisdiction, so I'm really hoping that LA will put some systems in place that will help avoid the possible discrimination-
Okay.
And support diversity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Noreen, last time I saw you, we were on stage together, if I remember correctly.
You remember correctly.
And we did all right, too, didn't we?
And we did.
Yes, we did.
And we did, and the price is still right.
The price is right. All right, go ahead.
So, Kat talked about the war on drugs and how it affected our minority community, and so, what I was curious about with the folks in Colorado, the background check, what things actually disqualify a person for a license? Because in Ninth Council District where I'm from, in a large part of South LA, we were disproportionately affected by mass incarceration, and so, a felony in and of itself, I'm just curious, is that, does that disqualify people in Colorado, and then to Lori in the state of California, is that going to disqualify someone from licensing?
So, in Colorado, a drug felony conviction within five years of application is an automatic disqualifier. It used to be a lifetime ban, and I think our General Assembly recognized the issues surrounding that, and I think have taken a step to correct that. So, today, if you have a drug-related felony within five years of application, it's an automatic disqualifier. Aside from that, you know, Barbara, who's the Executive Director and the State Licensing Authority, has broad discretion to look at the totality of circumstances, so it's not to say that, you know, somebody that had other felony convictions, even outside of the five years, if there was a pattern or something like that, could be considered, but generally speaking, we're pretty focused on just the automatic disqualifiers that the General Assembly has drawn the line for us.
Does the drug drug disqualifier-
Yes.
So, in both the medical and Proposition 64, they have, they're similar on the suitability standards, there are certain felony convictions that are disqualifier, but a lot of the suitability issues will be addressed in our regulations, and similar to what Colorado is doing, we're trying to keep it flexible and not have specific criteria, meaning it has to have so many years, you know, looking, we're going to be looking at the passage of time, but we're not going to mandate it has to be, you know, five years or 10 years or whatnot for passage of time. So, we're trying to keep that flexible, so it gives the state the ability to look at, again, the totality of the circumstances when we're looking at convictions and looking what's, you know, happened in their life since that conviction, looking, you know, one thing I think we're concentrating on is that we don't want to, we don't want to restrict folks from getting a license simply because something was illegal, you know, illegal, and now it's legal, so if, you know, if we're looking at some, you know, you know, simple drug convictions or possession charges, I think the state is going to be very flexible on those things, so we're not, you know, continuing that affecting you as you try to get into the market now. And so, we're very conscious of that, and I'm going to tell you, when you see our regulations, I think it's really important that you read the rehabilitation criteria that we've set forth, because we really do want to hear from you, and it's okay if you disagree with us, by the way, we're okay with that, but tell us why you disagree with it and what you think would work better, because I think you'd be in a perfect position to let us know how we could do things better, and that's, again, they're not final regulation, they're proposed regulations. Yes, that's the hope, yeah, I can, that's the hope. I have other people above me that are still, like, reviewing these, so that is the hope. And by the way, can I do a plug?
Please.
We do have a listserv, and if you aren't on our listserv, please sign up for it and put your email address, because when those regulations come out, we will let everybody know. And one more plug, we do have, we are taking applications for our Cannabis Advisory Committee. If you are interested in applying, the deadline date is March 17th, so please go on our website, bmcr.ca.gov to apply. We are going to be selecting some brave folks to help us develop some of our adult-use regulations.
Thank you.
Sure. I'm sorry, it's bmcr.ca.gov.
All right, thank you, thank you for that. You got to Sacramento, when, what year? What year did you get to go with the department or?
The Bureau that was, that we created, I was the first person at the Bureau in-
No, but when did you, because didn't you come from?
Oh, I came from the Alcohol Beverage Control, I was there for 22 years regulating alcohol.
Who was the guy that was, he used to be the Police Chief of Inglewood, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Mike Nadeon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I was up there for a minute, they didn't let me stay long, but I was there. So, look, let me thank everybody for coming, but we have, we have an action item. So, Mr. City Attorney, this is what I want to do, and we have a recommendation, we don't, I don't think it's important to go through all of the verbiage, but basically, what it does, it creates, I want to say, five things. It establishes a commission with duties so that we can begin conversations about regs and what have you. Number two, we want to develop budget staffing, so I'd like to, I'd like to get that back so I can incorporate that in the mayor's budget. Number three, we need a fee study to establish, you know, all the administrative fees and things of that nature. Number four, I think that we would want a report back as we're developing the license and application, and, you know, we want a software conversation website, and the council file on this, I want to keep open, but I also don't want to restrict the CAO's office, we'll direct the CAO's office to do it. I want, if they have a better idea than this blueprint, then I want to hear it, I want to hear options from them, this is just to give them a map as to how we're thinking. So, if there's not an objection, I'd like to move that.
Second?
Okay, so then, without objection, that'll be the order. I want to let all of you, I want to thank all of you again for coming, to let you know we're going to have another hearing. Andrew, stop me if I'm wrong, March 22nd, it will be in the council chambers, on that day, we will have a panel of state regulators from Oregon and Washington. So, we really, you know, let's give these guys, Barbara and Ron and Lori, we really appreciate you coming down. It's been a very informative meeting, but it's really kind of cool that a lot of the states that are already engaged are really willing to come and share with us, I want you to know that it means a lot to us. Andrew, is there anything else I'm forgetting? Okay, then Erica, is there any other business before this committee? Then, this committee's adjourned, so let it be written, so let it be done. Thank everybody for coming.